Good evening, this is Vice President Malloy and this is a call to order for the Rochester Prep Charter School Public Hearing. Education Law subdivision 2857 and Regulations of the Commissioner of Education require the Board to conduct a public hearing within 30 days of receipt of a notice of an application for a new or revised charter school. The Board of Education of the Rochester City School District is conducting this public hearing regarding an application for Rochester Prep Charter Schools. The purpose of this hearing is to gather community input to provide to the New York State Education Department. Rochester Prep Charter Schools, an education corporation with the authority to operate more than one school, seeks to renew its charter and its authority to operate the following schools: Rochester Prep Charter School I, Rochester Prep Charter School II, and Rochester Prep Charter School III. A determination regarding this application has not yet been made and is currently under review by the New York State Education Department. At this time, I do not see any speakers listed to speak. With that being said, the hearing is now adjourned. And we'll go right onto the next one. Do I need to wait or am I good to go? Let me just get onto my other screen. All right, once again, good evening. I am Vice President Malloy. This is a call to order for the Rochester Academy Charter School Public Hearing on September 25th, 2025. The Education Law subdivision 2857 and Regulations of the Commissioner of Education require the Board to conduct a public hearing within 30 days of receipt of notice of an application for a new or revised charter school. The Board of Education of the Rochester City School District is conducting this public hearing regarding an application for Rochester Prep Charter Schools or for the Rochester Academy Charter School. The purpose of this hearing is to gather community input to provide to the New York State Education Department. Rochester Academy Charter School proposed renewal term of grade levels and projected enrollment is requested by, or they're requesting an increase in enrollment, years one through five from 2026 through 2031. A determination regarding this application has not yet been made and is currently under review by the New York State Education Department. Looking at the speakers list, I do not see any speakers listed, so at this time, this hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. This is the Rochester City School District Board of Education Business Meeting. And today is Thursday, September 25th. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we're going to ask that we reverence the flag with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will ask our student representative, Mr. Elijah, to lead us in that pledge at this time. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elijah. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to our board clerk, Ms. Rahima Nguyen, who will provide the roll call for us.
Good evening, Commissioners and community. I'm going to do roll call if you could just indicate present. President Simmons.
Present.
Vice President Malloy.
Present.
Elliot. Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Patterson.
Present.
Commissioner Santiago. Thank you.
Did you hear me?
Present.
No, ma'am, we did not, but I will now mark you present.
Yeah, because... We can hear you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Griffin. We do have you accounted for. We're going to move on with the Board of Education upcoming events if you'd like to continue there, Clerk Quinn.
Yes, ma'am. The Board will open the month of October with a work session on October 14th convening at 6:00 p.m. They will follow up with the Hispanic Heritage Celebration on Wednesday, October 15th. The reception will begin at 5:00 p.m. and the program at 5:30. The Board will close out the month with a speaker forum on Thursday, October 30th beginning at 5:00 p.m., immediately followed by the Board Business Meeting at 6:00 p.m. All reference meetings are held here at 131 West Broad Street and Conference Room 3A, 3B.
Thank you.
Any... In regards to signing up to speak and addressing the Board, any individual may register to speak by contacting the Board office by noon on the day of the meeting. You may call 262-8525 or email boardofeducation@rcsdk12.org. No registered speaker may address the Board and no individual may speak on behalf of a registered speaker. At the time of registration, you must include your name, telephone number, home address, affiliation, and the topic on which you wish to speak. Individuals who do not reside within the city of Rochester do not have the privilege of speaking at meetings except when an exception is granted by the chair of the meeting for which you're requesting to speak. Each registered speaker may address the Board for up to three minutes. Speakers utilizing translators, including American Sign Language, may address the Board for up to six minutes, which include three minutes for the speaker comments and the remainder for the translation. You may view the Board's calendar, meeting calendar, at rcsd k12.org/boecalendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Quinn. We are going to move into the acceptance of minutes. We have a multitude of minutes for acceptance letters A through G on the agenda, being the June 26th Business Meeting, July 8th Work Session, August 12th Work Session, September 2nd Special Meeting to convene for consideration of resolutions, September 9th Work Session and Consideration of Resolutions, September 16th Speaker Forum, and the September 16th 2025 Work Session. All 2025 moving to or motion to accept the minutes.
So out.
Moved by Vice President Malloy.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With no objections, the minutes have been approved. And we're going to move into our advisory reports at this time. And so, Mr. Elijah, if you'd like to proceed with the student report.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope we've all had a strong start to our new school year as we continue to go further into our schedule. Our September has been pretty active as one of our committees have come to life, classmates have begun to reconnect, and student voices already begin to advocate. Not that the school year has started, the Student Leadership Academy, the Student Leadership Congress, my apologies, have began to blossom. Yesterday was our second meeting where we had a total of five schools in attendance, the schools in which were Monroe, School of the Arts, Padilla High School, Edison Tech, oh, I wrote the same school twice, and School Without Walls. The representatives from the following schools have been introduced to the bylaws for the Student Leadership Congress and have, and are excited to make quick work of things as we've already begun to identify problems within our buildings. For other schools, I cannot wait to see them become active. I know sports and jobs are hindrances to attending our meetings, but I still cannot wait to see you guys there. Our next meeting will revolve around reviewing the Board policies that have been introduced to me around two weeks ago, September 14th, and I will release our propinions before October 15th. Before I transition away from the Student Leadership Academy, I wanted to raise awareness about a dilemma revolving around the New York State phone ban. In the meeting yesterday, a student mentioned that IB students rely on tablets to do their work for academic purposes. With the New York State phone ban in process, it becomes very complicated for them to do their work. The reason for that being that most of their stuff is on these tablets and with the confiscation of these tablets, it's hard for them to access certain things that they cannot access on their Chromebooks. I also wanted to raise awareness about the New York State phone ban because of other dilemmas such as students being behind on their schoolwork because they don't have the technology that they need because there is a shortage of it. Now, with the class of 2030 rolling into the schools and leaving their middle school issued Chromebooks to their buildings, there's a big demand for these computers. Now, the problem really doesn't rely within the new era of students that are coming in. It relies into the old classes that we have here. With the newer classes being prioritized, the waitlist for the older classes increase over time. I know, I filled out an application about two to three weeks ago at the beginning of school year and I have not received anything yet in regards to my computer at all, email or voice. It's obviously very crucial to have one of these because a lot of the work now is online. And without a computer, your grades start to fall behind. And it becomes very hard to catch up, especially in the early stages of the school year where there's a lot of stuff going on, SATs, college field trips, et cetera. It's not just myself, and I've heard this from an abundance of students within my building, complaining about the same situation where there's a shortage of Chromebooks because they're going to the freshman classes and the older classes who actually need Chromebooks are not receiving them. Now, it's safe to assume that if it's going on in one building where there's a mass population of students, it's also going on in other buildings. So, my last question or my last awareness that I want to, the last thing I want to bring up is how much consideration was put into the grand scheme of things regarding this phone ban and rather just than the things that face value? Aside from that, the school year has been looking good. It's been looking like it's been off to a good start. The student spirit is in the air with crowds filling the stands and sports are moving into high gear. I hope the vision of a new era in school continues to come closer and closer as we progress through the year. Thank you, everybody. I will see you in October.
Thank you, Elijah, for that insight and we have that... Thank you for that, your insight, Elijah. And that is how we want to hear student voice advocating and that is helpful for us to bring your perspective and experience into consideration. With that said, I don't see any advisory, any other council or advisory reports for this evening. Before we move forward on the agenda, I do want to acknowledge that there's been a shift in how we are doing business meetings. Typically, on the fourth Thursday of each month, you would have speakers that were able to come sign up, speak to the Board based on topics or what have you in three minutes. We have implemented a speakers forum which takes place, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was on the third Tuesday of each month typically. This month, it would be on the 30th of October. With that said, we do recognize we have different challenges and things taking place and not everyone has caught up on that information. It has been shared, but it takes time sometimes to get that. I want to, if I can see a show of hands, if there's anyone who was interested in speaking this evening at all because there were some inquiries, and so I want to just acknowledge that. If none, we'll move forward, but I do want to make it known that I'm willing to allow for three minutes. Well, with the Board's consent if we, but I just wanted to check the interest. Okay, with none, we do want to move forward with the evening and I'm going to ask to entertain a motion for executive session. The Board may convene into executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular persons or organization in pending or current litigation with general counsel. Entertaining that motion?
So moved.
Vice President Malloy, second. By Vice, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the Board will at this time move into executive session.
Thank you, okay, welcome back. We are the Rochester City School District Board of Education Business Meeting. Again, today is September 25th. We have exited executive session and we're going to move forward with our board reports. There is no report for audit at this time. We will ask that our new CFO, Robert McDowell, join us at the podium or from where you're seated to present the monthly report and at which point we'll have some, maybe some questions for you. So, Mr. McDowell, the mic is yours, sir.
So, I don't know the protocols, so I'm just going to go through the report and give you a quick synopsis of what we have here. Is that, is that okay?
Yes, typically, we just go over the report. You'll share some high-level information and then we may have a question or two, but yes.
All right, so are you going to ask, are you going to ask questions or you want me to go through the report?
Go through the report and after you're done with the report, maybe we'll have a question afterward.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, for the most part, this report is up till September 25th, which is today, and we're giving you a really quick synopsis of where we stand financially. For most school districts, the summer months, we don't receive a lot of revenue. So, that the case for Rochester is the same where most of our receipts and dispersments are somewhat the same. Usually, the dispersments are a little higher. So, on the first page of your report, you'll see our cash flow decrease slightly from $356 million or $57 million.
Mr. McDowell, I do apologize profusely for interrupting. I'm not seeing the report attached to board docs. Okay, no worries. So, we're just going to ask to pause for one moment so that we can view along with you.
Okay.
And just so, if you're wondering what's happening, just the report needed, we had to update the board docs. I'm trying to get back in now to make sure I can access. And there we go. Okay, so we do now have the finance report. Mr. McDowell, thank you for your patience. Please continue.
No worries. So, to continue, for the current year and at this time, we usually in the summer, our dispersments or expenses outpace our revenues and that's the case here where we, we started with about $357 million in the bank and now we're at $353 million in the bank. Not a major downturn, but expected since our state aid doesn't start to flow in until into this month and then you have some other months where we'll start to get an uptick in state aid. So, at this particular moment, not a major change in cash flow, that's still illustrated here, but expected for our district. When you turn to the next page, we start to look at our special aid and our, and our revenue. Biggest adjustment in our revenue is our special aid fund with the uptick of about $1.7 million and most of that is from the referee, the refugee school impact grant and most of those funds are rollover funds. So, monies that we had in the grant the previous year that we didn't spend, they roll over to this year and they increase those, those balances that we can spend. And as we move further down the report, no changes in appropriate fund, appropriated fund balance and if you go to your third And if you go to your third page, you can see our funds and what we spent and what we've appropriated. And something I asked our budget director today, which is unusual for me, but seems like it's normal for Rochester, we don't encumber our salaries at all. So, as someone who wants to give you a financial forecast on a monthly basis, not encumbering your salaries doesn't give me a more definitive look as to what we look like when it comes to our expenditure. So, it looks like we have about 74% of our budget available. We really don't because we haven't encumbered all of your salaries for the year. So, just something to keep in mind as we move forward and it may be something that I will look to explore even further. I don't want to go through each and every page, but I will highlight a few things. Next week, I'm meeting with our bankers in the city as you look at our cash balance and our general ledger summary. Again, it shows that we have the 300 and some odd million dollars in the bank and here's a breakdown of all of our accounts. One thing that I have a slight concern about is our general checking. We have 25 million dollars in that account. I do know that there are higher interest rate-bearing accounts that we can look into, but I don't know the protocols and the procedures that are used with the city and it's something that we can discuss later on and I'll discuss with them next week. But these, this is a breakdown of all of your accounts. And again, as I learn the job more, I'll be able to give you a better understanding of what we possibly can do, if anything. The next page is your cash flow projection. You have your actual up to August and then you have your guestimates for the rest of the year. And the good thing is, once we get to June, we're expecting that our cash flows will be somewhere, our ending balance will be somewhere over 400 million dollars. Your last few reports here, you have your revenue summary. Again, you can see as of August 31st, page seven, we don't really have a ton of revenue that we've brought in and that's, that's normal. So, don't be alarmed by that. Most of the revenue that we've brought in has been interest earnings. The rest of it, you'll see populated as we get into September, October, November, when the state is functioning and sending money our ways. Going forward, these are more breakdowns of your revenue and your expenditure accounts. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Mike and I, our budget director, we thoroughly went through these earlier today. So, I didn't see anything that was overtly alarming or that, that should be brought to your attention. And I know that's, that's what you're, that's what I'm supposed to do if I see it. The last 20 or 30 pages of the report are all of your budgetary transfers. So, I know anything over 500,000 has to go to the board, but for transparency, we show you all of them so that you see them. If you have any questions, let us know. Again, I did review all of these with Michael earlier today and there weren't any anomalies or things that brought major concern to me or we would have addressed them or we would have had further conversations. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Commissioner LeBron?
Yes, I guess my, my question right now, because this is as of August 31st, is when can we expect the year-end report and the closing of the books? Because we have not, we're about to be going into October. I was anticipating it tonight. I know we're a little bit behind on closing the books. But can we get a date on when the board and the district is gonna close the books and when we can expect to see that?
My expectation is that that will come in the next 30 to 45 days. I will admit that with the issues that we've had with our transfer or conversion over to Oracle, we have had some issues with the ledger and I want to make sure that that ledger is accurate. So, I don't want to rush, rush this process. So, I would say 30 to 45 days.
Can we align that with an actual board business meeting so that we, so if you want to say the November board business meeting, that would give you 30 to 45 days?
Dr. Ross, sir?
Yeah, we could both certainly do that.
Thank you. Were there any other questions or statements from commissioners regarding the financial report that was presented? Commissioner Patterson? Okay, Commissioner Griffin, if you mute, I know, I now know that you have something to say. I'll have Commissioner Patterson go and then I will come to you. Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the report, you reporting out. And I like what you said about just taking your time and getting it right the first time. So, if it takes a few additional days to, you know, make sure that it comes in, you know, the way it's supposed to, I'm really appreciative of that, that you take the time and dot your i's and cross your t's. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, I have to say that because of all the things that have happened with Oracle and to Mr. McDowell's point, he came in on this and he's trying to go at it with boots on the ground. If he needs that time to make sure that we have viable information regarding the financial report, then he needs to be allotted them days. Don't stick him to a November date. And, and he's coming in, he's, we've been working with Oracle and so many errors with that from other leadership. I don't think that's fair to him. So, if he needs that time, I'm willing to give him that time. I, I would think that the public would want something to be factual and right, not wrong. So, if he needs that time, I, as a, as a commissioner, I think he needs to, we need to give him that time. I wouldn't lock him into a November date. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Superintendent?
Yeah, Commissioner Griffin, we're gonna align it with one of our business meetings. So, Mr. McDowell and I will, will work to, to make sure that what we produce is, is going to be quality and accurate so that the board will then be able to act on it.
Okay, thank you.
That's sufficient, Dr. Ross. I think my whole point is that we don't want to, we don't want to brownbeat somebody just coming in the door and to make sure that he is, he's doing his, he's doing his job. So, I think that's important.
Okay. Thank you for your comments and expressed thoughts, Commissioner Griffin. At this time, if there's no other questions and I do see Commissioner Santiago's hand?
No, I just want to say that it is legally required for us to close our books. So, I think usually by now it's done. So, it's just interesting that it's not done. We know that there's transition, but we also have responsibilities legally that we have to accomplish. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding the financial report presented this evening? With none. Thank you, Mr. McDowell, for your report this evening. Moving forward on the agenda, I'm bypassing the president's report and we're gonna move into.
I need to take a motion to accept the report.
Oh, you know what? Thank you. Thank you. Motion to accept, entertaining a motion to accept the financial report as presented this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial report has been approved. Moving toward the superintendent's report at this time.
Okay.
Dr. Ross.
Yeah, I'm not gonna take too much time because I know it's already getting late and we still have another major presentation to provide to our board commissioners and our community who are here. So, real quick, I just want to provide an update on a number of things that are happening throughout the district. Next slide, please. I do want to sort of point out that at last Tuesday's work session, we talked about concerns families may have with school-related matters. And we want to make sure that our families have the resources to place, in place to address these issues. We do have on our website a platform that, that will provide opportunities for parents to better understand, parents and caregivers to better understand how they may elevate concerns that they may have. It's broken down by classroom concerns, building level concerns, concerns with transportation, special education, technology, et cetera. What we are planning to do is to make sure that all parents are aware of this. So, as a part of our monthly family newsletters that go out, we will be putting this in each of those monthly newsletters into the, the end of the year. I do want to sort of also articulate the first day of school, which took place quite some time ago, but it was before our, or after our last business meeting. I had the privilege of visiting schools across the district. And having the opportunity to go into classrooms and really see our children, really see our teachers and just really see the whole school community doing what's in the best of children really reminded me why we are so connected and why this work is important. As we begin this new school year, we celebrate the excellence already present in our school district and we look ahead with a shared commitment to build on the excellence and create even greater opportunities and access to all of our children. Next slide, please. Do want to also speak to our Strive for Five campaign is getting a lot of good traction out there. And as we are looking at the attendance data, we are seeing that, you know, students are attending. But we are also very cognizant that typically the first few weeks of school attendance is always high and then as the school year goes on, it drops. So, we are most certainly working to not only articulate the importance of attendance, but also to be able to provide supports so that if parents have concerns or issues or there are obstacles that are not allowing students to come to school every day, we want parents to most certainly reach out to us because we have a whole lot of individuals in this school district who are prepared, from social workers to school counselors, to parent liaisons, to community school individuals who are here, attendance individuals who are here to address and identify the barriers that are present in our students' lives that may be preventing them from attending school. Next slide, please. I am very thrilled to announce that the Rochester City School District and its partner, Vargas Associates, have been selected to receive a 2025 Top Projects Award from the Rochester Business Journal. This project is a recognition that honors the best building and construction projects in Rochester over a 12-month span. We are being honored for our work with Invest in Tomorrow when we begin implementation of our comprehensive school reconfiguration plan. Congratulations to Chief Scott and his team on this accomplishment and I appreciate all that everyone does for students, staff, and more importantly, our families and students throughout the district. Lastly, I want to also recognize the good work of Christian Swan and the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We held our Special Education Department, Special Education Resource Fair over at School 33. This was for all parents and caregivers of children who are enrolled in special education throughout the district. There were a whole slew of community partners that were available, providing resources to our students. And the goal of the resource fair was to create an inclusive space that celebrates diversity, embraces the unique abilities of students and promotes the varied special education programs and services that are offered in our district and within our community. Next, I want to share that on October 15th at 5:30, here at Central Office, we will be celebrating Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month. Students will be recognized for high academic achievement, community service, and leadership. A special award will also be given to honor individuals who have made great contributions throughout the Rochester community. We hope to see our school community as well as our external school community here at that event. We also have the HBCU Expo and Football Classic where there will be 20 colleges, admissions and scholarship information provided. That HBC Expo is happening right now. The Football Classic and Battle of the Bands will happen this Saturday at 1:00 PM at the Rochester Community Sports Complex. There's also free PSAT and SAT opportunities for all of our students on October 1st through the 17th. Both exams are on a digital, digital platform. Students, grades nine through 12, will have the opportunity to take the exam at their school between October 1st and Friday, October 17th. These exams will help open scholarship opportunities for our students and prepare them for their next steps towards college. Together with all high school grades and SAT can show the student's potential to succeed in college and/or career. Last evening, or two evenings ago, I held my first fireside chat. This is an opportunity for us to engage in conversations with students, families, staff members to hear directly from me and ask me questions about what's going on in the district and how we might be able to strengthen our impact on student learning. The date, so the upcoming fireside chats are November 12th. That's going to be a special fireside chat with the BEC where we're looking for monolingual parents to be there. And we will be providing translation services there for our families as well. January 13th, March 18th, we have another fireside chat with the BEC on April 8th. And then our last fireside chat will be on June 9th, 2026. Today, we had a wonderful celebration of Dr. Iris J. Bannister. She is a 32-year, was a 32-year employee of the Rochester City School District. She was an elementary teacher, reading specialist, guidance counselor, translation facilitator, and house administrator. We were able to do the ribbon cutting over at the School 33 today. The entire family came out. It was a great event in which we are very appreciative of the legacy that Dr. Iris Bannister has here in the Rochester City School District and we're excited to be able to honor her and to create a legacy in remembrance of her and all that she stood for. We have recruitment events happening. Oasis Literacy Zone Job Fair will happen October 1st from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. The Hall of Justice Job Fair will happen on October 15th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I will be providing a presentation of my findings, clearly outlining a vision for how we're going to move forward as a school district. My presentation called "The Future of the Rochester City School District: Vision, Journey, and Destination" will take place on October 9th at East High School at 6:00 PM. We call upon the community to join in the critical work of elevating, elevating student achievement across all schools. So, we're looking for the entire school community and our external community to be present so that we can really learn what I've learned over the past, understand what I've learned over the past 100 days and also understand how might we be able to work together to strengthen our collective impact on student learning and success. That concludes my superintendent report. I welcome any questions that commissioners may have.
Okay. Do we have any hands online at all, Clark Lynn? I do see Commissioner Santiago's hand.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the Bannister family on School 33 being renamed after Iris Bannister. I am honored to be the board liaison for that school and was great to be at the ribbon cutting today to see the family. Iris Bannister is a body that shows us what community looks like, that shows us what a leader in our community looks like. And so, it's great to see her honored. It's great to see her name on a school. But my hope to superintendent and to, you know, our administration is that this school is not just named after her, but that every student in the school knows who she is. And it's important not to just name the school after a person and not teach the kids who this person is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, Superintendent, I just want to, just to congratulate you and thank you. You stepped into a very difficult role, but I just appreciate the organization that you have, the detail that you have, the team that you put together, the thorough reporting out that you do, the, the knowledge that you, and net intelligence that you obviously possess and present to us. So, I just want to thank you. I just want to thank you. Good thanks.
It's a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you and your team. Excuse me.
Okay, so I also wanted to echo Commissioner Santiago.
Commissioner Simmons, I've been asking, I've been flagging. I asked Commissioner Santiago to also flag you, but you.
Okay, okay. So, I miss you and I'll come to you when I, in a moment. As I was stating, I want to take a moment to echo the sentiments expressed by Commissioner Santiago. My family has known the Bannister family personally for a number of years, both Mother Bannister, Queen Mother Bannister, as well as her husband, Thomas Bannister respectfully. So, my parents know them. My sister went to school with Simeon and I had the opportunity over the years to sit at Queen Mother's feet. And so, many of the things they expressed during the ribbon cutting and even her services previously are just such reminders of the powerhouse of a woman she was and even sitting at the. And even sitting at the ribbon cutting this particular evening was such, it brought a peace and an understanding and a redirection that's necessary because anyone who knows her knows that she indeed was a woman of faith. So I do want to say that. I love what you said, same thing I said about 16th School and any schools that we rename, that we recognize that the students need to be able to pick up the attributes and understand not only who the school is named after, but what those individuals stood for, who they are, what they did, but also how to apply those skills to themselves. Because Mother Bannister was a woman of strength, courage, knowledge, and just class. And something to be said about a woman with class that knows how to carry herself with decorum, that knows how to walk into a room and her posture and position without a bunch of rah rah can literally calm and bring some kind of direction to the room, and that's what she did. She exuded that, and so I hope that those attributes transfer to our students. I also want to recognize that some of us were even instrumental in supporting the renaming of the school, being Commissioner LeBron, myself played a role, Commissioner Santiago being the school liaison. And so it is an honorable, honorable thing, and I wanted to take a moment to express that on this evening. So congratulations to the Bannister family. With that being said, Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I also want to uplift Commissioner Santiago's specific statement about ensuring that the school now has the proper supports. It is our largest elementary school, as you know, maybe not, maybe you're learning now. It's also my grandchildren's school, Commissioner Santiago's sibling school, so it's a school that we are physically at on a daily basis, and clearly one that continues to need resources that this district has unfortunately, over time, not given them, especially when they had their leadership transition. So I feel very hopeful with not just the renaming, but I do want to also thank the Bannister family for donating $42,000 today. And I want to uplift that, like, in part of naming this school with a family that has a legacy that, who has children who are continuing family legacy, that I have no doubt that the Bannister family will continue to try to pour and give into 33 because they would like to see every child that goes to that school be successful. And so I just want to uplift that because there's still obviously lots of work to do, and I hope that we don't become a barrier to the partnership with the Bannister family, not now, not ever, and that we'll continue to build those relationships out. And congratulations to the Bannister family and to the School 33 community. Thank you all as well.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Ms. Lynn, do we have a hand at all anywhere? Okay, awesome. So I want to move forward with the agenda at this time. We're going to go on to the consent agenda, excuse me. I want to also take a moment to recognize that two resolutions, being 170 and 174, were removed, so the items may look a little out of place there, but some corrections were necessary, so that's why you see it that way. And those resolutions will appear, if you look at your agenda, you'll see those on Section 9. So I'm going to ask at this time to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as you see them.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by VP Malloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Consent agenda carries, moving down to the Section 9, and this is to entertain a motion for Resolutions 170, 174, as well as 177 through 204. So moved. Moved by Vice President Loy.
Did you miss, excuse me, Madam President, did you miss 176?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that. That's right above me. I'm looking at, I had a highlight there. So let me just go back down to Section 9. We do want to look at Resolutions 176, 170, 174, and 177 through 204. So I'd like to entertain a motion for those resolutions at this time. So moved.
Second.
By VP Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. Open for discussion at this time, any on those resolutions? With no discussion at all?
Excuse me, excuse me. I just want to make sure that's one of the ones I'm sure we spoke about relative to an executive session. Just give me 10 seconds to make sure it's the one I think it is. Okay, I'm up. Thank you.
You're all set?
Yes.
So with no discussion, or any questions, all in favor of Resolutions 176, 170, 174, 177 through 204?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay to the entire bundle, or?
Just that one.
To 176? So Clerk Lynn, do we need to redo that to pull that out?
No, I just need to clarify what he's saying nay to.
He's 176. I won't speak for you. Commissioner Patterson, just to provide clarity to Clerk Lynn.
Give me a second, please.
176 is the one you had a question about, and that's what you're saying nay to?
Give me a second, please. Yeah, it's a nay for me.
Okay. Yeah, I have a nay.
176, just for clarity.
That is for 176. That's a nay for me, for 176 only.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, I have a nay as well. Hold on, let me get back to the screen so I can tell you which one, I think it was 194. Hold on one second. Give me a second here. It is, uh, 194. I need more clarification on that. That wasn't discussed. So I don't, I don't recall seeing that in our work session with all the, when the resolutions came through. So I have a question on these and, yeah, I have a question on one or both of those, of the resolutions for 194.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
And I'd like to change my vote. That's, I had it mixed up with another case. So that's a yea for me for that, not a nay.
So you're yes to all of the resolutions?
It's a yes.
Okay.
176.
Any other resolutions?
There is one.
Commissioner Griffin, for one moment, if you can allow me to just gain some clarity from Commissioner Patterson, then I will certainly return to you on the screen. Give me one more moment, I just want to make sure. So 176, you're good on, and then the resolutions in the package that we're speaking for this evening, were there?
There's the one we spoke about relative to the damage to the school.
Can you provide the resolution number? Is it in this bundle that we just went through? Okay.
It's not in the bundle?
It's not in this bundle? Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't in this bundle.
Thanks for your clarification.
So you have the correction for 176? Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes. From my understanding, I know that we were given resolutions at the work session and that we were to go through them and then that we would have no question about them. Some of these were not in that work session, I don't believe. I don't remember seeing.
You're correct, and I'll, let me provide a little clarity for that. So during the work session, the resident.
Can I just, can I, before you say something?
Yes, please continue.
Please. Yes. I, never mind, never mind, because I just heard Jesus. I'm good. I just don't agree with.
You got to call on her sometimes.
Yeah, I know, but because.
Please continue with your question. Do you have a question? I want to listen.
My question is actually a statement.
Okay.
Because what I was told, what I was told was that we wouldn't have any questions about the resolutions because we already went through them. Now I'm getting resolutions that are new. So I didn't know that we're going to be new resolutions on this, on the, on the, in this meeting. So I have a question and I have concerns, and they are valid concerns.
Yes.
So I don't agree with having resolutions come, and then I'm thinking, oh, we're not going to have any additional new ones, and we have the new ones here, and I was not privy to that.
Okay.
So I have a question, I have a concern.
Okay, Commissioner Griffin, I do appreciate that, and as I stated earlier, at this time, I'm going to provide you with the clarity that you may need regarding this. If, I just need you to hear me out. During the work session, what we are provided with are resolutions for consideration for the consent agenda. That is not all-inclusive of all resolutions that we will see during the business meeting. Those are only consent agenda items. So you would be correct in stating that maybe in this package or bundle that we're looking at right now, they were not part of the consent agenda. The consent agenda resolutions were the resolutions that we all just voted in favor for, and those would have been Resolutions 170, excuse me, 153 through 175 minus 170 and 174. Those were the consent agenda resolutions with no questions. So if you look on board docs, you'll see consent agenda items. Those were the ones during the work session that we identified as we're moving them forward with no questions, as we did this evening. Where we are now are going into the additional resolutions that are presented during this particular business meeting. And it sounds as if you do have a concern regarding Resolution 194, and so you do have the option to vote nay on it if you don't agree with it, and you can also put questions in the log or reach out to administration on that one. But Resolutions 170 through, all these other ones, all through 204 that are bundled, those are on the table now, which is okay if you have a question because they're regular resolutions.
Yeah, but these are things that could have been addressed in the executive session. I think it's unfair to me, unfair to me to have to wait, to have to wait when this, I had issued questions on these resolutions, and I'm seeing them and they're coming on there. Yes, maybe I misunderstood the whole process prior, but at the end of the day, there's protocols that are being broken, and I'm not, I'm just really tired of seeing broken protocols and policies that are outlined for this district, and we're going to have continue, we're going to have to continue downfall. And I'm serious.
Listen.
This is not, this is not good. It's not good, and I'm tired of it.
I appreciate that, and so let me.
I'm really tired of it.
What I'm not going to do is go back and forth. What I do want to do is respect your position.
I respect you, but I'm tired of it.
Commissioner Griffin, this is not a conversation, this is a statement I'm making. I'm not conversing any longer because there's nothing that's been broken. We are following protocol, and I think you may have some misinformation. Now, what I would like to do is move forward with the agenda as it is, and respectfully, we can reconvene off this mic and off the stage and have this conversation for some clarity. So I do understand there's maybe a little confusion, but we are within the expectations as outlined by our standards. And so at this time, and I got to try to read these resolutions again, do we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion is for the resolutions, and so I think, are we at the eye part outside of this?
Yes, but I have a comment on a resolution.
Okay, Commissioner LeBron?
Thank you. I just want to thank Leah and congratulate her, who is getting tenured tonight at Oasis, which is our adult education program, and she's getting tenured in the executive director position, and I just want to congratulate her. And I would ask that everyone keep Oasis in thoughts and prayers as the year continues and we hit 26 and 27 school year with the federal changes. I think it's something we're going to end up having to fight to keep funding and seek potentially even alternative ways of continuing Oasis that may not be directly tied to federal dollars coming in. But I just have to say, I've watched Leah up close and personal in that role. I've sent clients over there to go and get educated, and the work that her and her team does is incredible, and I know that being tenured is a really big deal, so I just want to congratulate her tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Simmons?
Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Santiago?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to go back to the motion you asked about and where we were in the voting process. So we did have the motion by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. We've established that he's a yes to all the resolutions. Commissioner Griffin said that she was a no to 194, and it sounded like everyone else was voting yea to all resolutions. That's what I have documented. If that's not correct, please let me know.
Okay, we got through it. Okay, and also thank you, Commissioner LeBron, for bringing that out. I got a little distracted, but yes, Leah is a gem. She also did great work at the inception of the East EPO. She's been around the district for a very long time. Leadership Rochester graduate, I got to shout it out, and I had the opportunity to work with her personally, so I do appreciate lifting that. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, I do want to bring our attention to Resolution EE, motion to waive the requirements of the 48 submission rule required by the board bylaws, and this would be in consideration of a walk-on resolution.
So moved.
205 and 06. Moved by Vice President Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor to waive the requirements of the 48-hour submission rule?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? With no opposition, we are entertaining the motion for Resolutions 205 and 06 at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Malloy.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor of Resolutions 205 and 06?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Hmm. Okay, so I have it here. So we are moving into unfinished, unfinished business at this time. Am I missing anything? Okay, so Dr. Ross, we're in Section 12, I believe, and we're going to go into updates regarding Oracle, it looks like.
Okay. Mr. McDowell, if you can go to the podium, please. So as Mr. McDowell makes his way to the podium, we do need to provide an update on Oracle Fusion Rock K through 12 implementation. As we all know, and it's been very clear, that we continue to have transition issues that is resulting unfortunately in our employees not receiving either a timely paycheck, a paycheck at all, or there being deductions that are taken out of paychecks that should not be seen in the paycheck. So what we're going to provide is a summary of the challenges, current action steps, as well as what we are doing moving forward. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McDowell, and he and I are going to tag team on this presentation. Mr. McDowell?
Sure. We have had some challenges with the product and the program, and as of last Friday, through some research and through some inquiry, we realized that about 242 staff had indicated that they had not been paid. And over the last four to five workdays, we were able to determine that that number actually was about 46 individuals or so. Of those 46, 35 of them remain unpaid. Actually, that number is 33 because we had, we issued a couple of checks earlier today. And some of this is related to M&amp;T, some of it's related to time, time slips and entry and a few other things. The good thing is, for all of the board resolutions and all of the summer pay concerns we've had, 94% of them have been resolved. Now, it's not 100%, but it's higher than where we were two weeks ago, so, which allows us to say that, no, we still have a couple hundred in progress, and we are diligently working towards resolving those as soon as we possibly can.
So if I can just jump in real quick, so on 9/19, of course, we all experienced, and many of our employees who bank at M&amp;T experienced this as well, we got a lot of self-reporting that staff members did not receive their checks. So when we look at this 242 number, that 242 number encompasses both individuals who there were Oracle issues, but also M&amp;T issues as well. Once Mr. McDowell and his team were able to really look at the numbers, they were able to see that we had 46 accurate claims of no pay, and as he indicated just a few moments ago, that is currently down to 32. We're currently still providing paper checks to individuals, and his team is really working hard each and every day to investigate each case as individuals and then issue checks once they're able to do the calculations and determine that what the salary should be for individuals.
Thank you. So to continue, why are we having some of these challenges? We still have some configuration defects with the system, which has caused delays and incorrect deductions to occur with some of our employees, and we expect that these will be resolved next month. We've had concerns and issues with dual assignments and split compensation, and we're getting close to having a universal fix with this, not just one-offs, but a universal fix. We actually had meetings about that earlier today and. Um, we actually had meetings about that, uh, earlier today and, um, I'm excited that we may have some positive outcomes with that, uh, in the, in the near future. Um, and we do have a backlog, backlog at the help desk, uh, and we are looking to a resolution with that. We're going to bring on Nova Modus and, uh, we have, um, a, a plan in place, not in place yet, but that, um, we're going to bring to the superintendent. Uh, I'm figuring Monday that will help us with the backlog for our ticket resolution. Some of our action steps, um, we're, we're looking to, um, understand more about Oracle. Uh, we have, uh, one of our leads, uh, at, uh, out of town, meeting with them, uh, or meeting with one of Oracle's partners to come up with a corrective action plan to help us fix some of these back pay issues. Um, we're going to, uh, continue our training. I know we've had five or six sessions, but, uh, we need more and we'll continue those and we won't stop those until we solve this issue. Um, some of it, uh, again, is just, you know, our, our staff understanding, you know, how to submit their, their time and, uh, making sure that we give them as many opportunities as possible so that they can do that. Um, and, and we'll do that in office, we'll do that in teams, we'll do that wherever it's convenient to make that happen. Uh, and then we're going to expand our, our streamlining, um, to, you know, continue with the triage report, um, you know, continue to, to, to work through vendors and if we need to, uh, enhance or expand our, our temp agent, agency staffing, we'll do that. Um, you know, as the superintendent says, all hands on deck until we get this solved. It's just that simple. Uh, and then we're going to, um, maintain our, our weekly communications with the union so that we can share as much information as possible, uh, because, uh, at the end of the day, they're the ones who are getting the, the phone calls. So we want to make sure that they know exactly what we're doing so that, um, they can, uh, share that with their, their, their prospective, um, individuals in their, in their groups.
And if I can add that this is, you know, the communication and the thought partnership that we're engaging with the union is to really work to resolve these issues as quickly as possible. We've had an opportunity to meet with the collective bargaining units now twice to discuss ways in which we can most certainly work towards some sort of remedy to be able to address, um, those staff members who have been impacted, um, by the issues that we continue to encounter with Oracle. Um, those conversations continue and, and we, we're working very closely with, with, um, our unions because we want to make sure that as it relates to the district's employees who are members of, um, the various unions that we have here, that we're working concertly to make sure that the employees are paid and the employees are paid on time, the exact amount that they should be paid, um, without any deductions and some of the things that we've been experiencing.
And lastly, for our current action steps, um, I, I know some of you, uh, in this room have received some, some notifications from the New York State retirement system. Um, we have been on the phone with them every day to make sure that, uh, these are getting addressed and resolved. And, and the most important thing that I can say to this group and say to the public is, uh, any of you who, who have received any of these letters, please know that the state, um, is, we, we've, we've tried to send the money to them and unfortunately it has not been received, but it has, it has been deducted from your accounts. So, um, be rest assured that, uh, you're not going to lose your tier. Be rest assured that, uh, the, um, the state, uh, will not, um, uh, consider you in default or, uh, do anything that will jeopardize your current standing with the New York State system. Um, trust me, I'm part of that system also and I know what that means, uh, for, uh, the longevity of what I'm trying to do in my, my lifetime and I'm very certain that's the same concerns that you have. So we're working diligently to make sure of that and we've been, we've been in conversation with the state for the last two weeks. Looking ahead, our next payroll is next Friday. Um, we actually are looking to, uh, have multiple payroll runs before, um, next Tuesday when it, when it actually, um, you know, it's finalized so that we can try to determine and, um, you know, uh, see what concerns we have so we can fix them beforehand. Um, we will continue to offer, um, pay slips, um, before, uh, the Wednesday before so that individuals, um, can look at them. And if they have any concerns whatsoever, we encourage them to use the help desk, uh, and get tickets in immediately so that we can address them. Our whole goal is to continue this process until we have no more concerns when it comes to help, uh, when it comes to a payroll. Um, again, oversight with our, our vendors, uh, we're going to leverage, you know, our solutions and challenges with, uh, Oracle to get to a better location or not better location, but a better outcome. And we've also talked to other districts who are using this system so that we can understand their concerns, uh, their, um, struggles and some of their successes also.
And that concludes our update for, um, the Oracle Fusion Rock K-12, um, transition challenges that we've been having.
Thank you.
We entertain questions.
Sure, absolutely. The floor is open for questions at this time. We have a question from Commissioner LeBron.
Yeah, well, yeah, somewhat of a, well, yeah, it is a question. Um, I know I, I made an ask officially, I know myself, Commissioner Elliott and Santiago about getting some concrete data around the number impacted. I'm still going to ask again, um, because as you say, you just presented a small amount. Hold on, I'm trying to pull up the number you just presented.
Yes, it's, we, 233 individuals still are impacted.
And I was with the teachers yesterday and they're claiming over 800 individuals who have contacted. And I want to point out that some of that discrepancy is that the self-help, I have, I've had emails from staff talking about the self-help. I know that from when that email came, there have been, there was an additional person added downstairs to help answer phones. But I do think it's still important to not minimize that whether people were paid and whether they were paid accurate, that's two separate things as well. So my official request, and I'm not asking for an answer right now on record, but we still need some data points. Like, it's the same repetitive conversation of, I hear you, but in government, if it's not in writing and you're certifying to that, then it doesn't exist. But I would like to see a breakdown of total impacted employees and that includes everything. If their deductions were wrong, if their New York State retirements weren't paid, um, if it's incorrect pay. And, and I want to highlight that I fully get the complications of braided funding for positions. I deal with the same issue too. It's a pain. Um, but you still have to have documentation in your books of who's getting paid from this grant, this grant, this title and so forth and this budget line. Um, so I, I would like to see a more comprehensive presentation with actual numbers, not just something that says 242 had not been paid, 46 being accurate, claims for no pay. Um, because we know, I think there are still people employed in this district that don't even know they are being impacted right now. And I was one of those and I want to point that out. I also, I hear you that you're, you guys are having verbal conversations, but unless I get an actual letter, and maybe this is a request that you guys can go back to the New York State retirement system to put it in writing to me. Because God forbid something happens and you two walk out of here tomorrow, I'm going to be stuck trying to figure out, just like every other employee, who do we need to contact up the ladder at the New York State, that, you know, Mr. Dow spoke to them. No, I want myself and every other impacted employee around the New York State retirement system to receive a letter saying that if their, uh, deductions have not gone up until this point, because apparently mines haven't been paid since we switched to the new system. So I'm going to assume that there are many others as well in that same boat, that we're not going to be impacted, we're not going to be kicked out of our tier, that we're not going to be impacted and certainly that we won't be penalized and it won't fall back on us to financially fill that.
It's a reasonable request.
Okay. Did you want to speak to any of the nuances and, and, um, any areas regarding the, the numbers?
Well, we know that, yeah, we know that it's been over 3,500, um, issues that we had through the summer resolution payments. Um, 94% of those are now complete. So when we speak to, you know, hundreds of, of individuals being impacted, we can confirm that yes, hundreds of individuals from the start of this, beginning July 11th, you know, were impacted. Um, but the total number that we have as of today are little less than 250 individuals who are still impacted. That would be those who are, um, dealing with, um, absences of toileting, some 630 pays, which would be our school counselors, you know, our, um, social workers, our library, not social workers, librarians, um, some of our registrars. Um, there are a couple individuals who are still impacted. When I say a couple, there are individuals who are still impacted, a small number, by not receiving summer PD, um, compensation that, that is grouped into that 233 individuals who are still impacted, as well as hourly employees, um, as well. And since last Friday, we have cut about 56 checks. I think that was the number that you had provided to me prior to walking into this meeting. And those checks are being cut every day until such time that we can make sure individuals are whole. But we will provide a greater detail in writing, a comprehensive, and what we'll work to do is to even provide that by pay period.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. Um, any other questions? Commissioner Patterson?
Uh, just a statement, uh, just for clarification purposes and, um, I hope I'm not divulging anything I can't from executive session, but what I'd like to say for clarification in defense of the superintendent is that he already asked us permission to send a letter out to all employees that have been impacted.
I think this might be executive session.
Is that something different?
I, 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 I'm.
I can't say that?
I think that right now what we, what we are doing.
Okay, I retract it then.
Yeah, so, yeah, and these are nuanced question. Yeah, sometimes people break executive session woefully, willfully and ignorantly and then some people do it again ignorantly with, with no malice.
Inadvertently, but on record, I just want to point out.
But at the end of the day, um, I think we're all at a state of frustration and wanting clarity and wanting resolve sooner than later. Um, but I'm done with that show. Did you have any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you at this time. Um, if there are no other questions, comments or statements, we will conclude, uh, thank you for the reports and update regarding Oracle.
You're welcome.
Uh, we're going to move on to the second readings at this time. And, uh, let me see if we can get through these. Uh, these second readings, um, are going to be the following policies. Policy 4205, pre-referral intervention strategies, 4206, response to intervention RTI process, um, policy 5000, student policy goals, 5153, parent preference managed choice policy, and then 6550, the vendor relations, um, policy. So those are the second readings that we're looking at. Um, this, at this time, these are open for comments or questions or thoughts regarding the policies. Track changes are there as well as clean copies. Have a good evening. Commissioner LeBron? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm just noticing that for most of these, they just seem to be like minor amended dates. Um, like on the first three that I'm looking at, the student policy goals, the pre-referral intervention, response to intervention. So I'm not opposed to any of those changes.
Okay. Any, any questions or thoughts on the track changes, things that we want to see different? Because as we know, the, um, policies will be voted on in the October meeting, so, um, this is an opportunity to make any tweaks, changes or address any concerns regarding the policies as presented with track changes. Um, Commissioner Santiago?
Question, question for legal. Um, in the policy about like vendor relations, and I'm not sure if this is like, and I see that specifically about.
I think so.
Um, discrimination specifically. And so I was going to ask a question about process. Um, definitely when it comes to vendors, like the possibilities or how or if it's illegal for the board to say or for there to be written out in a policy that vendors who are also located in the city, you know, have, you know, I wouldn't say priority, but you, you know what I mean? Like to give out those special, um, those special sites to people that say vendors who are in the city gets first priority compared to vendors who may be from New Jersey compared to Rochester.
Um, uh, that's a, a good question, Commissioner. Um, no, not, not necessarily, right? So it depends on the process, right? So for example, in our, in our RFP processes, we're allowed to, um, you know, on scoring criteria, right? So for example, you can, I say, hey, we want to work with somebody closer and, and you could, you know, in your scoring criteria, that could weigh more than, than something else, um, you know, so to speak. So, um, there, there are some, some, some general municipal law and, and state law and federal law around, around our procurement, but we do have, um, some level of discretion often with how we weigh certain criteria. And for example, like, you know, this talks about, uh, like MWBE, um, sometimes the, the funds that we get, right, uh, have specific criteria that we have to kind of adhere to as it pertains to that. So, um, but that is a very good question.
Yeah. And so how, how does that look as far as board action? Does that look through rewording, let's say specifically this policy or possibly another policy? When, when we talk about prioritizing local vendors, um, how does action from the board looks like for that? Because we don't get involved in RFP process, so.
Um, right. And, and, and that, that could potentially come through board action, like through something in, in, in one of the policies, for example, um, you know, in, in one of the, the vendor related, like a policy like this or one of the other, because we have several procurement policies. Um, often that occurs on the level of the folks who are going to be interacting with a vendor, um, who have an understanding whether it is important for the vendor to be, to be local. Uh, if there's a set firm criteria set by the board, it, it could lead to complications in, um, variety and, and who we're able to get and look at for the things that we need for the district sometimes. But again, if that is the, that's the will of the board, it's definitely something that could be kind of looked into and, and, and further discussions, um, had.
Well, then I, I want to say individually as a commissioner, I think that.
Commissioner Santiago?
I, I think it's important for the clerk to hear this part because I do want to make a recommendation for changes on the policies. So, um, I think that to, to prioritize, um, our local vendors, um, and that's not saying, um, that it's only our local vendors, but putting, um, language inside of the policy that's like, unless it's, it's, um, or pursuant to New York State law, federal law, you know, putting more favorability around local vendors, if, you know, what we're looking for, there's a local vendor possibly inside of that.
So, so Commissioner, may, um, again, maybe what can happen is some information be brought back to the board. I, I, I think that does happen actually a lot organically.
Right.
Um, again, because for, for most people who live and work here in a community, it makes sense, uh, to have people who are close by. So I think what you're saying already happens a lot organically, but obviously I don't have that, that information. So maybe that is information that can be brought back and then, then, then the board can look at it and make a determination whether board action is necessary.
Yeah. And that, and that will, that will actually be my request. Um, you know, of course, if, if, if the board agrees, but I think, um, although you say it does happen, like I don't think that from our budget, it shows, you know? And a lot of times you see even in processes for curriculum or anything like that where you might have some, uh, teachers from East who created a curriculum, but instead, you know, this major manufactured curriculum was chosen instead of that. And so, um, I will say it's happening in some areas, but I just think in, in some other areas, it could be better. It's also important during these times to make sure that our funds are local. Um, so there's also a resolution that was passed tonight of almost a million dollars going, entitled one funding, going out to, uh, some of our suburban school districts. I think it's important as we go, uh, further into, um, this current administration's, um, agenda and pushes, that we start to ensure that our money is coming back into Rochester, coming back, uh, into the district, um, in a way that, that is benefiting our city overall and our people, so.
Okay. So, so I don't want to speak for your commissioner, but did I, did I hear like maybe a question on law question to see like what's the percentage of that spend on like local vendors or something? And, um, that information be given to you and, and then you can decide whether to kind of raise it again with your colleagues?
Thank, thank you, Legal Counsel. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other questions? Vice President Malloy?
Thank you. This is just regarding the, um, parent preference managed choice policy, 5153. Um, I forgot that this one was in here. Um, I think that we should pay close attention to the bilingual.
I think that we should pay close attention to the bilingual educational council feedback that was given. You know, there were some concerns that they seem to have expressed here that we might just want to raise as board. Some of their feedback included, you know, in a school district with declining enrollment, we've got to give preference to pre-K families in the primary schools of their choice. The school zone is receiving more weight than the parents' decision to maybe remain in RCSD. So that was a concern that was brought up, which I think we should consider. And then further down in the policy, currently in our policy in Number Three, Section C, our current policy states that pre-kindergarten preference, where if a student attended a school for pre-K and is within their zone, they would have a preference to a kindergarten seat. And it says in parentheses, "This preference does not apply in citywide schools and the .75 mile proximity preference for up to 60% of capacity." And I remember we changed this a few years ago, but according to the bilingual educational council feedback, they're asking some really pertinent questions. What about pre-Ks that have special programming? In other words, like bilingual programs like at School 12? And I think those are some really valid things to continue, to consider moving forward. And, you know, I think a lot of families are having more and more of a preference for staying within that same elementary school wherever their kids are going to pre-K. And they've got younger siblings that are coming up through the program as well. And ideally, I think most families probably want to have their kids all in one place so they don't have to go to separate schools. I know that now that my three of my four kids who remain in the district, now that they are at the same school, it's a game changer just as a mom. When they were at three separate schools, that was a lot to handle. And I can't even imagine what families go through who are dependent upon public transportation, far less privileged than my own family. It was a lot to handle. And people with young kids and strollers, and we talk about community involvement and wanting our parents to be more engaged. Having all kids in one school is really advantageous for most families and want to see that transition from pre-K right into the school program. So whatever we can do to facilitate that, I would just implore my fellow, my colleagues to consider those types of things. And I think this was some valuable feedback from our bilingual education council.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. And actually, you know, I actually have this same policy pulled up and been mulling over it this entire time with those same comments that I wanted to make sure we highlighted. So no convincing here. I think we're on the same page regarding that. And so I would like to probably deeper explore those things. And I know just this week, we had a family not necessarily connected to BEC or bilingual education, but just the matter of a family who had a couple of children going to one school and outside of the zone, and some strong barriers, and the district was able to facilitate and support. And I know that in not in every single case are we going to be able to accommodate families. But where we can and where it makes sense, we do want to take a look at these pieces. So thank you for lifting that. I too, second policy number 5153 and the feedback recognized by the bilingual education council. With that said, were there any other statements or questions, concerns regarding policies 4205 through 6750? With none, those readings, we can just forward.
I believe Commissioner LeBron wants to make a comment.
Oh, she's on the-
She's on, she went on Teams.
Oh, she jumped on Teams, okay. Sure, Commissioner LeBron? And then Commissioner-
Yeah, I just, when we talk about the Managed Choice Program, Policy, I just want to point out that there are so many reports. And again, even previous commissioners like Elizabeth, when she was on, she did a committee where she had feedback on this. The Southeast Education Group spent years also doing research on this. And we, as a board, about eight years ago, and again, six years ago, with different commissioners, also held some listening sessions and some focus groups around the Managed Choice Policy. And I think that there's enough feedback from all of those groups to implement it. But I also want to acknowledge the district's financial constraints to implementing all of that feedback. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding these policies? With none, we're going to, I think we don't need to necessarily vote on these. We just move these forward into the third readings where they'll be voted on at the October reading. The same with the first readings. We'll take a look at those really quickly. Those are policies 4350, Multicultural Global Education, 4360, Teaching of Controversial Issues, 4400, Field Trips and Excursions, and 4513, Library Materials. Any comments, questions, or concerns on those policies at this time? I'm just looking really quickly. Oh, you know, the day trips. I do, there is a comment on, this is policy 4400 around looking at opportunities to cut through procedural delays. I think a lot of things we have to be mindful of, and there's technical nuances that we want to dot our i's and cross our t's as we should. But where we can streamline or make some efficiencies so that day trips and things of that nature don't become so cumbersome without compromising safety, that might be a good thing to look at. But I don't have a specific recommendation at this particular time. So with no additional comments or statements on the first readings under new business, we're going to move those forward to the second readings at this time. Also on the agenda, we have the Commissioners' Professional Development Report. We do know that at the time, State Monitor Shelley Jallow, it's on the agenda, recommended that, you know, we as commissioners often or have opportunities to go and get some professional development. And so recently, myself and Commissioner Santiago attended the CUBE. And forgive me, I'm working on Team No Sleep today. Patience is a virtue, and if we can extend some grace, because I'm going to tell you, this is a hard bunch sometimes. But off the soapbox, what, the urban school districts, they all come together across the nation, and it's such wonderful opportunity to learn and grow. Commissioner Santiago, I'm going to allow for you to share some of your thoughts, and then I will share mine.
Yeah, so the CUBE conference was an insightful conference. It was amazing to be able to go to LA and meet the people that we've been able to meet. And I not only come back with feedback of the professional development, but I come back with possible action and ideas to enhance the Rochester City School District. And we've seen in the recent years and in the past years a high level of chronic absenteeism, a high and low level of our proficiency and literacy and math scores. And it's obvious that there's a possibility that the current instruction and the current material that our students are learning from isn't engaging them in the way that we need them to be, i.e. 50% chronic absenteeism and our low proficiency and literacy and math rates. I believe that when we follow old procedures and follow old cultures of teaching and learning with a new generation of young people, with new technologies, with new opportunities, that we miss giving our young people an opportunity for their future, definitely as we see technology advance inside of our world. And so I believe that adding and innovating our education is important for our students. And I believe that using AI as a tool inside of our education will be beneficial to Rochester in many different ways. And part of the benefits is, one, creating spaces for personalized learning where AI can adjust lessons to each student's pace, strength, and weaknesses, to also help struggling learners get extra practice while allowing advanced students to move ahead. It also allows accessible support, providing 24/7 tutoring or homework help. This also helps with our testing scores. Tutoring is important for our testing scores. And when you have a 24/7 tutoring AI tool to support our children, it will be beneficial. It also assists students with disabilities through tools like text-to-speak, speak-to-text, or adaptive interfaces. It also engages and motivates our young people. There are different platforms that allow and make our learning more interactive and fun for our students. And it also gives feedback to our students to keep them motivated and on track. Part of learning and part of being a self-advocate for yourself as a student is knowing where you are, knowing where you have to be, and doing the work to get there. And it also bridges the learning gaps inside of our districts. It identifies the gaps in knowledge early, and it offers targeted practices, and it supports language learners, which is big for the RCSD, with translation, vocabulary building, and practices. There are a lot of AI services, hundreds out there, who are tools to help support young people. You have GEL's AI Leveller, which lets teachers adjust reading level of instruction content to match each student's reading ability. And it's a helpful support to reading comprehension. You have Brisk, which is an AI tool that helps with English language learners. And it helps them level and look at text, translate, level at any text, generate material and lesson plans. There are districts inside the United States who has AI integrated into their district between policy and services. And AI is not, and for RCSD, it should not be a replacement for humans, but a tool to enhance our learning outcomes. The district in California in LA includes teacher and student surveys. There are piloting AI tools, and they are currently creating an AI committee. And you have the Douglas County School District who is exploring building their own AI platform and is currently testing those platforms inside of their districts. And so I hope to see in Rochester innovation to our education, integrating AI as a tool, not as something that's relied on, not replacing humans, but as a tool to help our students with their outcomes. NISBA has already recommended an AI policy for the RCSD, because what is also important is regulation and ensuring that there is balance. And so my ask is that the RCSD School Board adopts what NISBA has already recommended to the RCSD for AI policy, but not only adopts, but looks at the policies, tailor it to the RCSD, and see how we can educate and innovate our education in Rochester, New York. I'll continue to focus on that throughout my next two years in my term here on the RCSD Board, because I do believe that can advance our district in ways that we haven't seen before. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago, for your report on the CUBE conference in LA. As I stated, I had an opportunity. I'll keep mine brief. There were several workshops that really stood out, and one of them being the State of Urban Education: Navigating the Political Landscape. That was actually presented by some of our colleagues from Russia and Riada. They did a wonderful job. And this was, you know, interesting because leveraging strategic planning to navigate the political tailwinds, something that we see in our district. But to see the unified approach that their board took created less confusion, unity around messaging, and really allowed for their district as a whole to move forward. And I think when we die to self and our own personal interests and understand collectively how we can either hurt or harm the district that we all sure care for, we can move much further together. And moving together doesn't always mean that we're in agreement, but there's something to that. So I truly enjoyed that presentation. We did get a chance to meet Kyle and Kaepernick, that was great. And he did a highlight on Lumi AI, which is his presentation. It's wonderful. And right here in Rochester, at our Rochester Central Library, we do have a comic creation class. So those are things that we can look at. It's, things exist all over, but they also exist right here in Rochester, and we can be more methodical. Matter of fact, I think they're already working with the district, and the district has been moving in that direction. So exciting to see that. And anyone who knows me knows literacy is my thing. And so just to see how those graphic comics and prompting and building that muscle for students, builds that critical thinking, was very insightful to see. And so I have already engaged the library around some of the AI activities we're having there, and will be following up with them on learning more for myself. And lastly, going on the site visits is something I recommend all commissioners to do when you go on these conferences. You can sign up for additional site visits. So I did get to visit the New Compton High School in LA, as well as the Benjamin O. Davis Junior Middle School. And the things they are doing really mirror conversations that we've seen brought to life. And so there's a lot of similarities or things that are already happening, but we saw students with drones, economics, cooking, arts, robotics. And those things exist right here in the district. And so finding creative ways to align and maybe highlight them the way other districts do and bring them to life, I think we are, have the ability to be such a competitive district, and we have so much to offer here. And once we turn our conversations towards our students and what this district can do and really lift these children that we serve. And we're all important. Commissioners are important, educators, we need, we all need each other. But these children need us the most. And so when we start to focus on them, I think we'll start to see this district move forward. And I'm very excited for that to happen, because it will. And with that said, thank you for submitting your report, sir. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda, do we? No executive session. If you, we can complete the survey, we need to revisit if we're going to keep doing that. Motion to exit our meeting this evening. Second. Patterson, Malloy, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.